It is seven o'clock. We'll reconvene in open session, the special meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We've been in closed session under sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. No action was taken. We'll move on to item four, Reports and Discussion. First is the monthly financial reports. Ms. Davis?
Yes, you have the financial reports in your packet. I think we've got, we're up about 1.3 million in our state revenue. Most of that is due to additional identification of special education students. That's about 850,000 of it. We, our tax collections are running behind last year. I think it's just a timing issue because the 31st was on a Monday this year. So I think we just had some deposits delayed into February. We are down about 300,000 in federal revenues, which is going to kind of offset that million three in state revenue. Main thing I wanted to kind of mention to you is Food Service Fund. We are up there, of course, in our revenues with our CEP program. We received word from the Texas Department of Agriculture today that they, right now, have funding through April 15th to fund the Child Nutrition Program. They only have commodities through February 15th. So we may have some increased expenditures due to the lack of commodities. But we do have a very healthy fund balance in the Food Service Fund. So if worse came to worse, we would have enough money available in that fund to carry us through the end of the year as far as the Food Service Program. Do you have any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Davis. Next will be Lone Star Governance. It is time for our quarterly self-evaluation. The template begins on page 23. With the summary of the prior quarter scorings on page 32. Vision one. If I can get to it. Deals with developing vision of student outcome goals. We have scored ourselves as 12 for several quarters. The one thing we were missing was broad community acceptance of the vision and outcome goals. We did make several presentations in conjunction with the superintendent's fall meetings, where we went over the Lone Star Governance Goals and sort of the process that we went through in developing those goals. There were a couple of questions. By and large, it seemed to be general acceptance. I don't know if folks are comfortable saying that that is sufficient community involvement to bump us up to 15, or if we want to stay at 12. That's the question. Any thoughts? You want to stay at 12, or do you want to go up and say we've engaged the families and?
No, we'll do more next time.
I'm okay bumping. It's whatever y'all want to do. Stephanie? You think it's funny? I have one that thinks it's funny. Leave it at 12? All right, we'll do that on Vision one and two.
That might be us.
You've memorized it? Vision two does not require the commitment to memory, but it does require the community engagement on acceptance of the goal progress measures. Y'all want to leave that at 12 also? Vision two. No, development. We'll stay at 12. Well, I think what we thought was, we did go back and tweak all those, and we had the town hall meetings before we tweaked them. But I don't know that they were intimately involved, other than us saying we're going to change these. So we can leave that at 12 if y'all want to do that. Vision three. The first requires us to have references to research cited within our constraints. I don't know if we have any academic sites in our constraints. We all, I don't know that we've all, have we adopted a theory of action? I don't think so. So I think that one needs to stay right where we are. Right? Which would also be nine points. Vision four. Is the constraint progress measures, again, it's going to be the... Do we have self-constraint progress measures? And do we have community participation in those? Probably not. So that one needs to stay where it is, correct?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
It seems like the majority of these, when you, when you go into the master, that they are all talking about community involvement. And I think we've been lacking in getting the, the community involved in some of these.
Right.
And that's why, you know, like, see, that's...
We actually asked that question during one of the conference calls with Deputy Commissioner Crabbell a few months ago. And he said that was not unique, because folks who went through the early training, that was not a part of the, the training and the process. And, you know, he said if we go back and try to get them engaged at this point, that would be appropriate. And so we, we did those first presentations in the fall. We just, Dr. Nelson indicated a willingness to do more to get the public engaged. But you're right, that's the issue, is the community participation. Accountability, one. Probably stays the same, correct? Let me remember where we were on that one. Folks, we already mass, we'd already, we already maximized that one. So we'll leave that one where it is. And then accountability, two. I still don't think we've done a constraint that's based on the cost of staff time on governance. And so I think we stay, leave that one where it is as well. Everybody comfortable with that? All right.
Are we doing anything on that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Structure. We were at 15, which is the max. We'll just leave that where it is. And then next is advocacy, correct? We've done trainings, unfortunately, to get the maximum points, you have to train students in Lone Star Governance, and I'm certain we've not done that. Nine. So we're going to stay at nine? And then unity, we're maxed out, so we'll stay there, correct?
Yes.
So with that, I guess y'all will put that on the consent agenda next week, and we'll adopt it. All right. Goal progress measure 2.1, first semester AP grades. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education to take us through this presentation directly related to our Lone Star Governance Goals. Dr. McLennahan?
Good evening, Board. So when we had to establish the progress measures for the AP passing, one of the ones that we decided was meaningful to look at was the grades that the students were given at the end of the first semester. Because really, kind of the belief of us that were putting together the goals were that if a student receives an A in an AP class at the end of the semester, the teacher's really indicating to the student that they are on track to be able to pass the test by the time they get to the test in May. So last year, I put together the same chart for you and to show you kind of where we were in terms of our first semester grades as opposed to where our passing rates were last year, so that we can use it really as a check to make sure that our, our teachers are grading at the level of rigor that the College Board will grade the AP exams. So what I've done for you is I've listed each of the AP classes at each of the high schools. And you have the number of As and the number of total grades that they gave. And then the number of AP tests in that subject that were taken in the spring, because some of them are, they vary quite a bit year to year. And then the percent of those tests that, the percent of students that received As versus the percent of those tests that passed. And then the ones that are in red and bolded, those are teachers whose passing rates are more than 10% off of the passing rate. And the ones that are in red and bolded are the ones that are more than 30% off the passing rate. And we can see, if you look at them, that there are some commonalities. The ones that are the largest offenders are German. Mr. Bockafin is, you know, very generous with his grading. But he didn't, he's only had a few kids test, less than 10 kids test in the last about six years. Then calculus. And those numbers, if you look at them, the teacher is actually more than 30% lower than what her passing rate was last year. And one of the things that the Board commented on last year when we looked at these numbers were that the teachers that had the highest passing rate on the AP exams were the ones who had some of the lowest A rates for first semester. And which is really showing that they have a good level of rigor in their classroom and they have high expectations for the students. And then the other one is art. And that really is very subjective. It depends on the scores that they get, the final portfolio that they put together and submit. And so the teacher really has to do their best grading, kind of guesstimate, based on the number of pieces that the student has put together so far. But again, that students in those art classes have until May to finish the other pieces for their portfolio before they have to actually submit them all to the College Board. Overall, the, the percent of As for the first semester was 40.6%. That's about 14% off of our passing rate. But if the teachers are being accurate, that would put us directly in line with meeting our Lone Star Governance goal of having 40% of the AP tests met, passed for the district. Last year, the, the AP passing rate was actually just .1% different than it was the year before. And we increased our number of tests by 200 kids. This right here would actually be another increase of about 96 more tests this year.
Other questions from the Board?
I will let you know that we are monitoring this so that we can make any adjustments that we need to before we give our mock exam in March, so that we can get as accurate data as we need from that mock exam to be able to intervene before we actually give the AP exams in May.
Dr. McLennahan, or you were talking about an increase in the number of tests given based on this.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at it, and it looks like I've got, in the first column, the fall of 2017, and then the total percentage of As in 2017, and then the AP test given in 2018. Where do I see the fall 2018 numbers?
Those are actually the fall of 2018 numbers. I adjusted it on the, on the overhead, on the screen. Those dates, when I put it in the chart, I just forgot to change those, but they are all 2018. And the numbers at the bottom, you'll see that for total grades given and total tests, there's a 751, then in an 897 under it. One of the things last year that we started was a pilot program with the Dual Credit U.S. History, because the Dual Credit U.S. History directly aligns with the AP U.S. History course. So what we did last year was to really encourage the dual credit class to have more rigor, was we tested all of those dual credit kids on the AP test, when we actually gave the AP test. And the dual credit students actually outperformed the AP U.S. History class. And so this year, we've expanded that pilot, and we'll test 69 students at Waco High and 77 students at University, which will end up increasing us about 96 tests this year.
All right. Other questions from the Board? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item 4C, which are the various committees in the community the members serve upon on behalf of the Boards. Anybody have any updates on any of the committees they serve on?
Mr. President?
Yes, Dr. Nelson?
I just think that, let the record reflect, we should amend the Avancee Board of Directors to Inspiracion, because Avancee doesn't exist anymore. Still leave Mrs. Cordewig as the, no other changes.
Right. I agree. All right, are there any, other than the correction, are there any reports? I know we, coming off the holidays, wouldn't expect a whole lot. All right, we'll move on to the update on the Prosper Waco Collective Impact Initiative. Dr. Polk?
Good evening, Dr. Nelson, School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, update you on the work of the Prosper Waco Initiative. I think there we go. We have a presentation for you. Just as a quick reminder, these first couple of slides are just a reminder, as you all know, Prosper Waco is a community-wide initiative, a collective impact initiative that is focused on really engaging a wide range of stakeholders in the community to focus their efforts and really work strategically and collaboratively to move the needle on issues related to education, health, and financial security of people in Waco. And when you talk about moving the needle or achieving measurable goals, of course, you have to have clearly articulated goals. So that next slide is a reminder, a list of the goals of the initiative, and these really define the focus area of the work that's going on. So in the education area, that's preparing children to, to come to your, the doors of your school, prepared to learn and ready for school, to assist the, the school district in moving the needle on third grade reading scores, and then in increasing the rate at which students go on to college or some type of post-secondary program after graduating from high school. And then you see as well the health and financial security goals there. And many of these are interrelated and kind of affect each other, which is why, why they were chosen as a set of goals. The next slide just talks about the role of what's called the backbone. So that's the Prosper Waco Initiative staff is what's called a backbone. The idea is that there is an organization that is constantly, as this slide shows, connecting the dots, working to convene and facilitate the work of collaborative stakeholder groups around specific issues, to identify and strategically implement different efforts that no one organization could do on its own, and that wouldn't really get done without a, a process of convening and facilitating collaboration. We've got some examples of what some of those things look like. And then on the next, the next slide, we talk about the fact that a part, a big part of the, the backbone team's role is, is what we call building a culture focused on outcomes. So really focusing, helping our community get smarter about the work it does and these, on these really important issues. That means working a lot with nonprofit organizations, but also, say, the city, city government, and looking at what data is available to them, what outcomes are they achieving, and how can they improve the quality of their, their programs and the services that they provide to individuals in this community. And so we do a lot of work around data analysis, training individuals and organizations on how to think strategically and effectively use the data. And of course, you all don't need that, because you've got, the, the folks behind me have done excellent reports on a, a wide range of data that, that you're looking at on a constant basis. So one thing we do is, most years convene a, a, a community-wide summit. We didn't do that last year. But I, there's certainly a plan for 2019. This next slide, this last slide in this section is just a reminder that the initiative is really what we call a public-private partnership. It really is a community-wide effort. So there are stakeholder organizations beyond the school district investing in this work, investing in the work of the backbone. And of course, we do that with our public partners, like the school district, through contracts for services with clear deliverables and outcomes for the work that we provide for the district directly. But beyond that, the district benefits from the wide range of work that the initiative is doing and the, the wide variety of projects and efforts that are, that are ongoing. And you see here some of the stakeholder organizations that are also committed to this work. So that's all kind of background. Please stop me at any point that you have questions. We just wanted to list as, as, by way of update, some of the work that we've done directly with and for the school district. I'm sure you haven't forgotten Senate Bill 1882 over the last year, and the adventure that was. We list some of the things that we have been involved in, in partnering with the district and continue to do, certainly through the process of working through the, the Senate Bill 1882 partnership, the creation of Transformation Waco, which Dr. McDurham is now leading. We have assisted the Transformation Waco team around a number of issues related to kind of being strategic, as we discussed, including creating and piloting a survey that you have in your packet of students and families on the Transformation Zone campuses to really identify specific needs that individual students and their families have, so that the district and its partners can target their resources and their work to meet those needs. And a couple of examples of that, and looking at, at some of those stated needs. Forty families said that it would be very helpful to, for, to have help, helping their children make sure that they have corrective lenses or glasses to help them see. And Dr. McDurham's been doing work with the Rappaport Foundation to make sure that students in the Transformation Zone get access to, to glasses and corrective lenses if they need them. And so we know who those 40 families are, who said that would really be a help to us. And she was able to take that information and cross-check it with the families that they're, that she's serving through that effort. And 47 families said, you know, we experienced some food insecurity. It would be helpful at times to, to have some assistance in getting food from a food pantry. And so Dr. Nelson was able to take those, suggested taking the names of those families who indicated that and making sure that the, the Pack of Hope program that the district's invested in and had those names and was, was serving, was serving those families. And so that's some of the kind of strategic, you know, focus and targeting of, of resources that we're trying to do. Now, there are a number of other bullet points on this slide and the next around some of the specific conversations we've been having with the Waco ISD and Transformation Waco leadership, and trying to, to do what we can to help focus, identify opportunities to focus on increasing attendance rates, supporting specific students, and bringing additional partners to the table. The next slide that says other work with Waco ISD has a list of, of other things that we have been involved in, either supporting or facilitating. Certainly have worked with the, the Project Link College Access Program for a number of years, have supported the, some, the district's summer internship in connecting employer partners and doing the evaluation of, of that program for the last couple of years. The Inspiracion Program, we are supporting that effort by providing some administrative fiscal agent services for that organization while they kind of get the organization as a whole stood up to make sure that the staff over at AltaVista are able to get paid as they serve kids and families there. And so those are a number of the things we're doing. And just some information related to those things on the next couple of slides. This next slide is hard to read on the screen, but it indicates the college enrollment rates for the first two or three years of the Project Link effort. I mean, it's incredibly clear that more students at University and Waco High School are going to college than did before the district partnered with the Rappaport Foundation and others to implement Project Link. And that the students who are involved in that program and are getting direct support from liaisons focused on attending college, those students are enrolling in college the fall after high school graduation at a much higher rate than other students. And that's, that's encouraging. You know, the, the ideal would be to serve every student with that type of intensive program. But of course, the program was designed to, to be kind of a pilot and serve a specific cohort of students. And we're really seeing that, those students benefit in terms of college access, which is exciting. And then a, a simple slide there showing you the, the increase in the number of students who participate in the summer internship program that Donna McKethan coordinates, and more employers are participating in that each year. So I think the goal this year is 90 or 100 student internships, which is great, and to see the growth of that particular, particular program. And the last slide in this section, we just want to make sure we talk, again, this is a community initiative, so this is not the work of our organization, it's the work of many organizations. And you see some of them there listed on the screen. For example, the, the Junior League is up there. They have, have provided the resources to fund about 2,500 of these collaborative school-ready, what we're calling school readiness toolkits. They have kind of information for, for parents, caregivers of kids, about child development and what, what it takes to get your kid ready for school. They've been provided to parents and caregivers and folks who work with families across the community. They've been provided in English and Spanish to the parents, as teachers, staff at Waco ISD who go out and work with the parents of young children to help them get ready for school. And so that's a nice little collaborative project that a number of organizations invested in to develop that. And then the Junior League provided the, the resources for that, to, to print those out so that, that folks in the community had them. The next slide talks about a number of the other initiative projects that really go beyond, for the most part, beyond direct work with the school district. And we just, again, want to remind everyone that there are a number of collaborative efforts under this broad initiative umbrella that have been developed in collaboration with multiple partner organizations in the community over the last two or three years, that at the end of the day are benefiting the people in this community, the kids, the families, the working adults who have, who have kids in the school district. And so it all, the idea is that it all fits together to improve quality of life, and to slowly kind of move the needle on individual issues. And you put all that together, and, and folks, folks benefit. So we're not going to talk about all the things on that slide, but there are a number of slides after that that talk about the Community Health Worker Initiative that targets four high-needs zip codes in, in Waco, 76704, 56 and 7, which of course are part of the school district, and focuses on increasing access to healthcare resources in the community through training and raising up community members to serve as community health workers. You actually have some data related to how many people are getting served and the types of services they're getting in your packet. The Waco Employer Resource Network is partnering with local employers and connecting them with social services so that their employees get the support they need to deal with any issues that may pop up in their life that may, you know, normally might lead to them losing their job or not being able to work for whatever reason. But when they're connected to certain resources, they're able to keep their job, to get the help they need, which means they're more stable, their family's more stable, their kids are more stable when they come to school every day. And so we've seen an increase in employee retention at a number of partner employers through that program. You have data on that as well in your packet. A number of other things, the Work Readiness Certificate developed by MCC is a real complement to the, a lot of the career and technical education work that the school district's doing. The Bank On Initiative is a partnership of a number of local banks trying to improve the way they do outreach to folks in the community. You know, and just a small little success story, the school district requires, you know, direct deposit to, to pay employees. And so the, the HR department here made some information available to Waco ISD employees about the Bank On Initiative and local banks that have either free or low-cost bank accounts that they can, can open up. And, you know, a WISD employee walked into a, a local bank with an email from the WISD HR department, said, "I got this email, I need to open a bank account. How can I do that?" And so that's just a little case study of how this kind of collective impact stuff, stuff works. That's one individual getting what they need, which is access to a, a bank account that will help them be financially stable, help them get paid by the school district. And it's just about working together and sharing that information. So, and then a lot of work around mental health, which is that slide on the Behavioral Health Leadership Team. So a lot going on that I think is really, is beginning to be really, when put together, impactful in the community, and, and hope it's really, you know, over the long term, will support the students and families in this community in a way that shows up in all of the outcomes data that you're looking at in terms of student performance, dropout rates, all those things. If we can address some of the, you know, the roadblocks that kids run into when they come to, you know, before they come to school every day around poverty or health issues, or whatever it might be, you know, that, that hopefully makes Dr. Nelson and his team's job easier to help kids be successful, graduate high school, get to college, and those kinds of... to help kids be successful, graduate high school, get to college, and those kinds of things. The last couple of slides there are just about the fact that we've brought it, we collectively have brought additional dollars into this community through collaborative efforts that wouldn't have been done by any one organization. But when you build collaborative partnerships and collaborative projects, there are funders out there, whether they're big foundations across the state or country, whether they're state or federal government grants that no one organization could get on its own, but have been secured in a number of ways, more than six and a half, I think it's closer to seven million dollars with a couple of local grants around mental health that MHMR and Family Health Center have received by our count of dollars brought into this community to provide important resources and supports to kids and families. And so that's, we think, a return on the investment that the school district and other stakeholders are making in this entire community effort. So, hopefully I didn't go too fast there. We tried to provide you a number of documents that come out of this work, including some of the data that we've compiled that you can use as a reference about our community and where we sit in terms of income and employment and educational attainment and so forth. A lot of different organizations are using this information to think about how they better serve the community and focus their efforts and so forth. Any questions I can answer for you?
Thank you, Dr. Polk. Ms. Manning?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
On that Junior League book you were speaking of.
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible I could get a copy of that?
You can have this one.
All right. The second question I got, I've always, well, lately interested in the amount of wages that people are making here in the city of Waco. Do y'all do anything about that? Do you have any idea how many people are just making minimum wage? You know, you can't, maybe a teenager can live off minimum wage, but not a family.
No, that's a great, that's a great point. So we have, you know, these two documents that you have in your packet deal with some of that. It talks about the household income in Waco. And then the second document is disaggregated data by race, so white, black, Hispanic, and it looks at income levels. The specific question of how many working people are working in minimum wage jobs is difficult to get to. We can certainly look into that. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we are, what we are trying to track is, you know, how much money are folks in our community making, you know, for the folks who are working full-time? What do wages across the board in our community kind of look like? And is that going up? Is it going down? How does it look when you break it out by different parts of town or different groups, especially different racial groups? And so we're trying to keep track of that and keep that part of the conversation when it comes to economic development and what the city's doing to attract, you know, new employers and different jobs and so forth.
Well, I remember hearing years ago that they say, "Come to Waco because you got a lot of people to work in the low wages."
Right.
Yeah. All right.
Just so you can make reference to it, the two charts he held up, the median household income is in the board packet at page sixty-five, and then the breakdown by ethnicity is on page sixty-seven.
Okay.
So you've got both those in there.
I think those are the conversations that we're having more and more with some of the, you know, a lot of the development in the downtown area, East Waco Hotels and so forth. The city's providing a lot of tax incentives and that's part of what we do is have conversations with city council and so forth about, you know, what are the, what are the quality of jobs, level of jobs? What's the pay, you know, hourly pay of the jobs that are being incentivized by the tax incentives that the city's given? And we make reference to this data to say, you know, our goal as a community is to move the needle on that and to see a higher quality jobs and more, you know, more prosperous folks in our community. So that's definitely part of the big conversation.
Okay, then my last question, well, not really a question, just observation, is the Bank Own that you were speaking of. And I know, and this may be even a question more so for Waco Independent School District, how many kids know how to reconcile a bank account? I mean, you know, that may be a question for us, but then if, do the Bank Own kind of deal with that also?
No, that's a great, great point. In fact, part of that conversation has been several banks in town do financial literacy type programs, but they kind of were doing them scattershot. And so that's what that group of banks who are at the table are talking about. And one of the things that came out of that, and in fact, there have been commercials on TV, Extraco Banks has invested in financial literacy programs for like eleven high schools in the area, including Waco High, I think, and are providing that. And, you know, to their credit, and rightfully so, they're, you know, they've, I've seen commercials where they say, "We're providing financial literacy," and I think it's eleven high schools in the Waco area. And part of that came out of that conversation, getting those financial institutions together saying, you know, "Part of your customer base is those people out there who need to understand their finances better," you know what I mean, "and need to have a bank account and be able to do all the things you're talking about." So that's one of the things that has come out of that.
You heard the old joke about the person who said, "Well, I know I got checks, so I must have money in them."
Before Dr. Polk is excused, I would advise board members, the contract with Prosper Waco is on page one-twenty-one. The scope of services they're agreeing to provide over the next year on page one-twenty-two and one-twenty-three. So if you have any questions regarding that contract, if you ask them now, then I can let Dr. Polk dismiss Dr. Polk.
Not have to, sorry, what, did I?
Carrie, please.
You won't have to pay until July thirty-first, 2009?
Is that what it says? Yeah, okay. We can, we'll work that out. We might have to have a line of credit from somebody else if you don't pay us for a hundred years. I'm guessing that's a typo.
Twenty-nineteen will be the second payment.
Okay.
That's not what it says.
Well, that's, good catch. We'll correct that.
Stickler.
Other than, other than whether we pay this century or next, are there any other questions?
We won't be on the board then.
Alan will. Any questions on the scope of services that are set out on page one-twenty-two and one-twenty-three? And again, just, you know, so I think everybody on the board's clear, we've been doing this for several years, but in exchange for those services and the benefits we get, we, the contract requires us to make a payment of a hundred thousand dollars to help support the initiative and the backbone efforts. And then they provide those services on page one-twenty-two and one-twenty-three, and they have a similar arrangement, I guess, with the city. And then there's some other funders as well. If there are no questions, I'm gonna let Mr. Polk go home to his wife and family. So, thanks, sir.
Thanks, thanks for your service.
All right. Discussion and possible action, we are posted to take action on three items tonight. The first is approving speaking services of the superintendent in accordance with Section eleven-point-two-oh-one-E of the Education Code. Dr. Nelson, is there anything you wanted to highlight on that? I know there's a written summary in the board packet.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. There is a written summary. It is customary that we've done since my time in the district. There is one minor edit that we need to make. There are fiscal implications for this act, action. In full disclosure, I'm scheduled to speak January twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen at the Baylor University's Department of Multicultural Affairs, Martin Luther King Celebration in the Cassin Building at Martin, at Baylor University. I am receiving a fee of three thousand five hundred dollars for that fee, for that presentation. So that needs to be part amended to be included in this background information.
All right. Any questions or comments? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the request of Dr. Nelson to receive outside payment compensation in the sum of thirty-five hundred for his speaking services. Thank you, Mr. Pettis, is there a second?
Second.
I'll give it to Mr. Manning. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, covered, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the instructional calendar, which begins on page one-oh-one. Is there anything you wanted to highlight, Dr. Nelson?
Yes, also, before we move on from that, normally when I have a speaking engagement, it's out of town and I use personal accrued leave, but this is basically a luncheon. And so I plan on using my lunch break. So moving on to the calendar, we have provided, as the board president said, beginning on page one-zero-one, a very thorough process that was coordinated by our Office of Human Resources along with a host of others. And I'd like to thank everybody that coordinated that. We've been to our district site base committee several times. We are recommending calendar option F. We've explained the background of how we came to this recommendation. We're proud to report that if the board approves this, we will have a calendar that is identical to Midway Independent School District, not identical, but pretty close as far as start date and end date. There are a few differences in early releases and in-service days. La Vega is also trying to copy our calendar as close as they can, Conley as well. So we recommend approval, calendar F as presented in the packet.
Any questions from the board? Dr. Nelson, I do have one question. I know there was the original polling of staff and parents for options A through D. I know the one that won had some fiscal implications because of the start date. Did we do anything similar to get input on F after it was developed by staff?
What we did is we went back to QUDAC, to the district site base, and just explained the tweak, and they were, I want to say unanimously, in favor of this recommendation. We do have members of the QUDAC here, so anyone want to contradict what I'm saying? I think, to answer your question, we went to the district site base.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I will make one comment. I was at a social event and had a teacher or an employee say that they hardly ever responded to this because they knew the board didn't pay any attention to it anyway. If you're talking to your staff, let them know this really does drive sort of which calendar gets chosen. Every year I've been on the board. The survey is what dictates the recommendation from the administration. And so if folks have a feeling, if they will take the time and review and see what best fits into their calendar, we really do take that into account in deciding which calendar to adopt.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adopt option F for the instructional calendar.
I move we accept the administration's recommendation for option F.
Mr. Sykes, there a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Then we have item five-C, which is, I thought we were supposed to do last month, but I don't think it was on the agenda, so, to approve the incentive plan. Is there any presentation from the administration? Dr. Nelson?
Mr. President, the board has approved a campus teacher incentive plan based on star achievement scores for the last five years. This year, in an effort to align the state's newest accountability system, A through F, the teacher incentive plan will now include six components to ultimately focus on school improvement. The new incentive plan includes the following components: the campus's raised overall score, teachers' raised scores, advanced placement success at secondary schools and middle schools, campus distinctions, early literacy, and teacher-perfect attendance. We've provided the plan as attached and we recommend approval. We've allocated approximately four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for this plan, depending on how many teachers meet the incentive goals. We spend anywhere from three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars in incentive money for the last several years. Is that pretty masamenos, Ms. Davis? So this is, you know, we've always had an incentive plan for the last five years and we've tweaked it to align it with A through F. I'd like to commend Dr. McClanahan, Ms. Benson, and several others for helping us organize this presentation, and we recommend approval as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Any questions from the board?
As we took action. Okay, for some reason, we didn't used to do that on workshops, didn't think it mattered.
And we normally don't.
We don't, but because we took action tonight, the provisions of the Education Code now require us to post videos on our website.
Speaking engagement actually occurs before the next meeting. Got it, okay, all right. I'm just, and I'm very happy spending the money on, you know, the teachers that are getting the job done. What I'm, I guess what I'm wondering is, and I don't know how you'd really, you should have to rely on campus principals to see who is really responding to this incentive and doing yeoman's work or a better job, sort of directly, I mean, it's kind of nice as a thank you, it's not a ton of money, you know, it's a half million, it's something, that's not nothing, but can anybody speak to that, that you've seen some real enthusiasm come out of pursuit of these monetary rewards? Is that happening?
Is my, if I can respond?
Sure, we are.
First of all, being creative with incentivizing staff members through compensation is a trend of the future. And creating multiple ways for people to make extra money is, I mean, we're basically being directed to do that from the Texas Education Agency, to identify a way teachers can.
To the scale they would have us do it.
That's true.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the governance guys.
Right. I mean, I think, I think they'd want us to do it even bigger.
They want bigger rewards.
Right. The other thing I would say is that this particular plan that we're asking the board to consider and possibly take action on this evening is really the result of feedback we've gotten from campus leaders. You know, we had such, we've eliminated some of the loopholes in our previous incentive plans where we had teachers on growth plans that were receiving thousands of dollars of incentive pay. And this has eliminated some of those loopholes. You have to be in good standing, you cannot be on a growth plan, and we think that teachers will think it's more fair. Now, I'll admit that I've talked to some critics of this plan that would like to see everybody in the building get some type of compensation. And that's something we're looking at for the future, but right now, we're trying to stay focused on our student improvement outcomes and really trying to compensate our teachers for Herculean efforts to get kids where they need to be.
Have you got a question?
My question is, is it making a difference, paying all this money out?
You know, time will tell, Trustee Pettis, you know, and I don't feel like I answered Trustee DePuy's question adequately either, but this is new. You know, we've had, as we said in the introduction, we've had incentive plans for the last five years, but we haven't had this one. And we've really spent a lot of time trying to embrace the new accountability system. This is the first year, this spring, right now, that we're in, A through F counts for the campuses. A through F was just a district thing last year. And so it's coming like a tidal wave, and we're trying to get out ahead of it. And so to answer your question, Trustee Pettis, we think it's gonna make a difference, but we won't know until the assessments are done. And we really go teacher by teacher. And I want to, I know I speak for our staff, we want to find ways to get more of our budget into the pockets of our staff. Eighty, over eighty-five percent of our budget is in human capital. So trust me, we're trying to improve not just teacher salaries, but every employee we have, every paraprofessional, every administrator, and we're gonna have to get creative with that because as of today, we have no new money. Now hopefully, because of the work of our legislature and our elected officials, then we'll get some good news that will help boost that. But right now, we're having to do more with less, and I just want to be clear that we understand that compensation is one of the most critical factors of every employee we have.
One more thing, in the past, we've given out tons of money, but the results have not been there. How about those teachers that are not doing what they're supposed to do?
Well, I feel like you're preaching to the choir. We agree with you that if there's gonna be compensation for our best and brightest teachers who have been successful, that there's also going to be a new level of accountability for teachers who are consistently failing to meet our academic goals. So, having said that, I really believe our teachers are resilient and responsive and really supportive of trying to maximize student achievement. And we don't want to be the type of leadership team that leads through fear. type of leadership team that leads through fear. We're trying to lead with incentives, we're trying to incentivize our teachers, we're trying to, we work, we, our multiple, our multi-tiered instructional plan involves instruction during the day, planning lessons for the next day, and things that we do outside of the school day. And really what we're hoping is, is that our teachers will be responsive, and for the small percentage of teachers that are not, then on behalf of our Human Resources Department, our curriculum team, we have a plan to help them get better or choose a different career path.
Just to follow up on Dr. Nelson's comments, Mr. DePuy and Mr. Perez, I think you're both correct to the extent that our teachers aren't doing this for the money, and they're not motivated by money, and, you know, I don't look at this as anything other than those who have really done an exceptional job, who've taken a certain student population and have knocked it out of the park, it's a way to say thank you. And it's a small enough amount of money, but is it going to, are we paying such a huge sum that somebody's going to drastically change the way? I don't know that we've done that, but I, but I do think it's, it's a way to acknowledge the efforts of those who've really had success over the past, past school year. I would say this...
I'd like to respond to that because I'm not against the plan at all.
Oh, I know you're not, I just, I just, but I agree with you, I don't think money is the key.
The more money we can get into teachers, the better, I'm just curious to...
And it'd be hard, it'd be hard to document, I don't know how you'd have a control group to say, what's the difference of how this teacher did with the incentive and without it? I mean, I don't think there's any way to, yeah. I would say this, based, no, and I know you're not against it, and I agree with you that they don't do it for the money, and I just think it's a way to say thank you. I think that's what it primarily is. I would say this, I remember the article in the paper last month, and, you know, obviously, accountability ratings and test scores are a priority for this district, and I think everybody up here understands that. I will also say this district's not all about test scores, and the thought that some of the non-core subject matter teachers have sort of limited participation. I mean, I know under component four, the whole campus can get some benefit, and I guess under component six, everybody can benefit if they have perfect attendance. I don't know how you incentivize the fine arts, I can't come up with a metric for doing that, but I am sensitive to, just letting the administration know, from my point of view, there's more to what this district offers than just focusing on, on the test scores and the distinctions and those things that are driven by, you know, the taper report. And so just keep in mind, as we continue to evaluate this in the future, you know, if there's way to, if there's some other critical area you identify that should be incentivized, I think we should look at it. But, I mean, I'm not critical of this plan. I'm sensitive to what was said last month, and I think we need to continue to look at ways to have as many folks participate as possible, but, I mean, I'm not opposed to it. Dr. McClanahan?
Actually, component one speaks to that and says that principals have the opportunity to take the largest amount of money the campus gets and divide it any way they want.
I think, I'd love to speak to this. As a former teacher, you know, I think you're right in saying that teachers, it's not necessarily about the money that they're trying to, you know, trying to get their kids to succeed, it's because they want their kids to really pass, you know? There's, there's some, there's some internal intrinsic drive and motivation that makes a teacher want a child to succeed, because most teachers are in it because they're in it for kids. And so I think, but I will say, as a teacher, when my kids took the test, of course, you have no idea how they're doing, but when you got, when you saw your kids pass and then you get a check, you think, wow, okay, you know, there, there is some type of, you know, you're saying it's not a lot of money, but for a teacher's salary, it is a lot of money, you know, a couple hundred dollars here, there, or a thousand dollars is a lot of money for a teacher, and I think, so I think, you know, while the motivation primarily, I would assume for educators, is more intrinsic and they really want to see their kids succeed, I think any type of monetary incentive for a job well done, for hard work, is, is, is always welcomed. And I will say also, I'm excited to see the component one campus raise overall score because I remember on one campus, our campus had received that, and our principal had a meeting, we sat down, and she said, "How do you want to divide this?" I mean, we had PE teachers in there, art teachers in there, kindergarten teachers, first grade teachers, teaching fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, you know, there were everyone, all hands on deck, and it was unanimous. We said, "Okay, just divide that lump sum for the art, PE, first, kinder, you know, second grade teachers who don't have an opportunity to kind of get this other incentive," because it really takes all hands on deck, and it takes a team to get kind of these campus raise overall scores. It takes a team to get campus distinctions. It's not just a third grade teacher, fourth grade, whatever. And so I just think this could potentially speak to that and hopefully get those teachers who are putting in the work some incentive.
Dr. McClanahan, you're correct. I said four, four's got to go to technology, it's one and six that give a little more broader, and I think it does go a way towards addressing it, and, but I just think, you know, the concern that we heard last month is one we just need to be sensitive to looking forward, and if there's a way to broaden participation in the future, let's look at it again if it's a critical need and a benefit to the district. And I, but I think you have, and again, I said the wrong number, but components one and six do give you a little bit of flexibility to get some other folks involved, and I think that's good. I just want the Teacher Association to know, we, we've heard them, and it looks like y'all have taken some of that into account to the extent you can, and it's something we need to continue to look at. Ms. Sykes?
I just wanted to, I guess, revert back just momentarily. Going back to the convocation, superintendent did a very good job of communicating to everyone that was there, most people were there in this room, about raising the level of expectations and, I guess, the challenges to meet those expectations, that higher level of expectations. And I think we've been doing a lot of talk through the governance process about student outcomes, and to the extent that we can incentivize teachers, campus level across the board, let them allocate funds, but celebrating those successes, I think, is an important component. And I do think the superintendent set the bar early through conversation, convocation, and we just need to reinforce that, and I think this is a good opportunity to reinforce that, and I can't say it's tied to, well, we don't like talking about test scores, but it is tied to student outcomes, and those outcomes are amongst our highest priorities and the successes of our students. So I'm very comfortable with this.
I agree with it, and I also would say, on my team, when I had received kind of this incentive for a certain subject, my fellow teammate came and asked me, "Hey, how did you get that? What did you do different?" And we, you know, we left some plan together, we did all this, and so we went through and we started doing more team teaching, and we started doing some of that. So I think there is, there is a way that if you have teams developed, it develops a wonderful, can develop a great...
Cohesiveness.
Yeah, cohesiveness and a little competition, which, which is always good.
Other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve the incentive plan.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewig, thank you, Ms. Sykes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to consent agenda. If you've got any changes to the minutes, just let Ms. McCutcheon know prior to next week. Any questions on the budget amendments? Any questions on the contract with Prosper Waco? Any questions on the election items, D, E, or F?
We will be giving you new revised agenda items next week because we have added Bell Need Convention Center as an early voting and vote center.
Okay, and that's what's on our dais up here today. Okay. So this will be what'll be in the actual, actual action item next week. Right. Any questions on the superintendent's appraisal calendar at item G? Any questions regarding the aspect matters that would have been discussed in closed Any questions regarding the early notice of resignation incentive or the master teacher All right, and then we will have the auditors here next week to present the financials, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But it is posted now, so you have plenty of time to review before they get...
And the entire report is in the packet?
Yes, posted on the web.
Okay, that's right, it's a, it's a separate link. All right, any other announcements from the dais?
If I may.
Yes, Ms. Sykes?
Mr. President, I apologize, but during the committee reports, I should have reported out as a reminder, you'll hear several more, this several more times, but March 29th, Friday, will be the Waco ISD Education Foundation Annual Celebrity Cook-Off. So look at your calendars, tickets will be going on sale, if they're not now, they will be on sale soon, and sponsorships are available, so please note, and we'll remind you many, many times, Celebrity Cook-Off, March 29th, Friday, at the Waco Convention Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Any other announcements from the dais?
I just wanted to be the man, Mr. President.
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to wish Miss, little Miss Anna Catherine Cordewig a very happy birthday. It was a year ago that, tomorrow, and so we just wanted to wish her well.
Nice catch. All right, hearing nothing further, then at 8:05, we'll stand adjourned.